Call a meeting of the Postville Community School Board, District Board of Education to order. Welcome all visitors here in the room and out there in radio TV land. Can I get approval of the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion being second by Eric to approve the agenda. Do you have any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I do have a question on one of the items in the bills. The payment to Nick Zercher for travel in August.
Yeah, that was for the state fair.
A thousand dollars for the state fair?
Well, he, yeah.
Who all went?
Public meeting. Again, I can answer that question maybe after the meeting for you.
Okay, motion being second by Larry to approve line number seven, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All approved, same sign. Line number eight, summer 2023 daycare playground equipment, safety surface and installation.
So this is the, you have the invoice or bid proposal in your packet and you were talking about the steel delivery charge. Anyway, we're kind of been planning on this for the last few months. Jenny's been doing a lot of work on this with the daycare center and I think this will be a really good update for them and hopefully keep some students here that really enjoy a very nice, comfortable, safe playground. Yeah, could you talk a little bit about it?
So the design is like a pirate ship. So the main design is a pirate ship and it swings and with early childhood, there's different aspects that you have to have in a playground. And so I've been working with the daycare and with Head Start. We came to the table about a year ago and the daycare is actually adding some things to the hill and changing some things to the hill. And so we brought Tim into the conversation and we said, we need to get some type of apparatus with some climbing and different things and a safety surface. And so we brought in this, this, this place and we thought it'd be really cool to bring in the idea of the pirates because with open enrollment and everything else and people being able to see it from the road, sometimes people forget where our school is because the highway is right there. But if we can make things eye appealing and we can get people to come to our preschool program and they make friends and we have some people that, that are not from our district that are in our preschool program right now. If we can make them make friends and they can stay here and open enroll here as they come through, that's, we're going to build our, our numbers here. And so if we can make it eye appealing and really a great place, that's really going to be great for our future. So it's, it's going to be a neat thing and I, I think it's really going to be great for our, our early childhood and our future here at Postville. Do you guys have any questions about the design or anything?
What kind of a lead time do they have to have to make sure it gets put in in '23?
So we already laid the cement. So the cement is already laid and so, and they're ready to ship everything right now. Like they want, we're like, hold on, we don't really want to have it here. So I think they're, they're ready whenever we give them the go ahead, don't you think?
So basically, we're going to pay half here probably this fall and then we'll pay the second half in the spring when they, when they ship it.
Yep.
Got to push the button again.
I would say as soon as it thaws, they're ready to start. I would say whenever we say where they're ready.
And part of the cost is them installing it because we installed this one here. It took us a full week and probably what, 30 people for five days and we were not construction people. And so we really struggled with like getting it just so, but we let a lot of people put in a lot of time. So up here, this would be done by professionals and they come in and do it in just a few days, I think.
And this is about one-third of the project there, so it'll, it'll go quick.
So is that total cost, is the daycare contributing on anything or are we just?
No, because we own the facility.
Right.
So we had talked about that too, that, you know, they can fundraise and whatnot, but their, their budget is really on a shoestring and we're like, we need to help wherever we can because we need, because we've got a lot of teachers that have kids in that center up there and we need that as a district. So we're, we're doing our part, I guess.
We also said with any maintenance and upkeep, we need to be responsible for that. So we want to make sure that it's our company that we're, we're taking care of and it's, it's our maintenance people that are taking care of it. But any of the other parts of the other interactive play things that they can be a part of, because that maybe if it's mulch or something that they can be a part of and they can do the fundraising for.
Can it be installed yet this fall?
No, because we need to wait until the spring to, for the purchasing of everything.
Oh, yeah, because of the, the price point. So we're going to pay half now and then half in the spring. So budget wise, it works better for our budget that way.
Does it, are we getting, are you paying for it after it's finished or when it's delivered? I thought you said.
Probably, we probably have to pay the final payment before it's delivered. Because we paid, I know, I know we got, we sent the check for this one out here and it showed up like right, right away and.
If it's supposed to be installed with that price, I'd be a little concerned putting all the money out with it not being installed.
Well, we can, we can wait till it's installed then pay and I, I'll just tell the salesperson that is, that's what we'll do, so.
Okay, we have no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the child development Head Start playground equipment or daycare playground equipment.
Second.
Okay, motion by Greg, second by Eric to approve it, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, okay, motion carries. Item number nine, 2020, 2223 Child Development Head Start Food Service Agreement.
This is an annual contract that we have with them. We, we make the food and then deliver it up there and then they feed their children and they pay us the cost of the meal. So it's a, it's a good situation because we can make a little money off of it too.
Seems pretty cut and dry. Once again, entertain a motion on number, line number nine.
I'll make a motion to approve number nine.
I'll second that.
Motion by Eric, second by Amy to approve it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Number 10, second reading of the updated board policies.
And these are from the previous month and also from the legislative session of 2022. So we do this four times a year, so this is just another one of those times that, for your review. And if you have any questions on any of those, can try to answer them, but they're all pretty cut and dried, pretty straightforward.
Okay, if we don't have any questions on them, I'd entertain a motion on the second reading of the updated board policies.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of board policies.
I'll second that.
Motion by Amy, second by Greg to approve them, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Number 11, Lawler Street property line follow-up.
So do you want to, do you want to update, do you want to be the official updater of the board? Just to kind of follow up with where we're at right now with it?
I guess we'd met with them last Wednesday, I believe, days run together. They really, really do not want us to put a fence in there at all. They would like us to let them just park stuff there. After much discussion, we told them we didn't like that idea. They kept insisting, they said we were hurting the community if we do that, we let the rest of the community park on our property. I explained to them in parking lots, not on grass. After a while, I said, well, I proposed a land swap. Told them to get ahold of the neighbor and buy us access all the way back and then we could swap land. They seemed very excited about that idea. They were going to reach out to their lawyer and the real estate and that's as far as I've heard from it.
I don't have anything new, that's all I know too. And did you have a question?
Well, my understanding is landlord didn't want to sell it to swap, first off. The other thing I, I struggle with is we talk about an access, but right now, do we have an access? Because it's all blocked off anyways. We don't, and so we really don't have an access anyways. The other thing is, is I really question how, how valuable is that land to the school? As opposed to how valuable is it to them? And what are we selling, what are we saying to the, to the community by putting a fence up and not letting them use it? Or selling it or whatever? So I'm just struggling with that.
They've did several things after the line was determined, pretty much, you know, that they were told not to. I told both the rabbis, I said, boundaries are boundaries and they need to be respected. And the respect from that side doesn't seem to, to come. The, the offer we put out to them, I think is about as fair as you can, can be. If, if they need parking, they could buy the house to the north. They need their parking on the south, so they've got better access to their facilities. They didn't put a whole lot of thought into any thinking with where property lines were when they did the last expansion. They want that bad enough on the south side, I told them, I said, checkbook talks. I said, you've got ground there. If you don't make an offer, you don't know.
Well, and they actually have property that they can park on behind this, the synagogue. And there is a driveway to the north of the synagogue that they can access to that, that piece of land. I, we suggested that and they're like, nope, we don't like that idea. Well, they were willing to build, to build a retaining wall on our property and fill it all in. They can easily do that on theirs, there's an old garage back there that doesn't look like it's in use anymore. I mean, they, they own land back there that, that they could use and utilize, they just don't seem to want to. As far as access, we do have access because, but it's blocked off by our stuff that we've put there because we had problems with them and other people driving onto our property there. So, and I'm going to say if we put in a parking lot, if we do let them put in a parking lot, if we don't put up a fence, we're going to have the same problem all over again, so. And I mean, and it's, I'd like, Eric, I think we're being very fair with this by saying, okay, if you want this piece of land, acquire this piece of land for us and we're all good. I mean, it's, like I said, order the house to the north.
Our, our future school district expansion, whether it be building or parking, is this way. We, we own it and that, and that's our, our access. You got a choke point right here. Way too many vehicles coming in through with way too much pedestrian traffic. And if we had that access out the back way, would, would eliminate a lot of that. You know, it's, it's not a, yeah, we need it six months down the road, but you sure don't want to give it away when you might want it in the future.
But we already have an access, isn't there, isn't there a right of way now? My understanding is there's a right of way, they can't do nothing about that anyways, right?
That's the piece of property that's in question.
So the, there is an easement there where we can always have access to the property. It's just how far that is, I don't know the, the length of that.
But if they, but if they install a retaining wall and parking lot and everything and all of a sudden we say, well, we want to utilize that to bring things through and we can't get through there. I mean, it's.
So I thought this decision was already made, that we weren't selling it to them, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then there's liability issues with them, you, like being on our land if we don't sell it, but they use it.
Correct. And our lawyer advised us to not go that route, so. I mean, I, I don't know, I, I, we're giving them, I think, a very fair opportunity to remedy the situation or gain land that they want. Ball's in their court, I mean, they, they can buy land north, they can buy land south, I don't, I don't know how else to remedy it.
The only thing we didn't do that day was put a timeline on it.
Well, they were willing to put a high multimillion dollar liability on it, insurance policy on if they wanted, if they, if we had, if they had to.
Is that even an option, do we know?
I can check with our attorney.
I would hate to be in a position to have the need to question if it's good and standing.
Yeah, there might not be a problem now, but 20 years down the road, if there's an issue comes up and all of a sudden they go, well, they dropped that five years ago. You know, you're, you know, now, now we're liable, I mean, I.
Well, couldn't you require them to each year when they renew, give you a copy of it? I don't know, I, I thought it was kind of cut and dry and done.
I thought it was too, until they reached out to us and me and Eric explained to them, we've decided this is what we're going to do. And they basically would not take no for an answer, so we gave them another option and it.
And they're struggling with what, what is that saying to the community when we aren't willing to work with them, I guess? That was the other thing.
But I feel like it's not us wanting to work with them, it's the liability for the school. Because like Tim had said before, it's school property, which is different than just, you know, someone else's property.
Our, our legal counsel has instructed us to not, not go that route on the, let them use it, you know, we got to respect that.
So what's the next step, I guess?
Well, they had reached out to the attorney for the person who owns the land over here and that's the last I knew. So Gideon seemed very optimistic, I guess, that there was something that could be worked out. So I don't know if that's true or not, but he, he, you know, he texts me or contacts me quite often and, and that was the last I heard from him, that he had had a connection with the attorney for the landowner, so.
He just texted me and was available if we wanted him here, so, Gideon.
Well, if there's no other discussion on, well, I, I guess we have to wait to see, see what the, what the lawyers say, but, I mean, I don't know. I, right now, I feel like we're kind of at a stalemate, but it, and we, what the, they, they kept repeating the, the same thing, Larry. What are you, what are you sending to the community, what are you sending to the community? If one of our neighbors up here started parking on our stuff and doing whatever they wanted, and, I mean, so should we let them, the next one do it? Should we let Brian and Kerry Boar start parking that way? I mean, if we don't put a stop to this, it's, we, it can just keep happening. And what sign are they sending to the community if they're willing to do whatever, disregard rules and laws and do whatever they want to school property? I mean, it.
My opinion, there's a good portion of that school property is fenced. Over there in the synagogue area that there's some that isn't. I, I think the, the fence on the boundary needs to be put in and, you know, it defines it. It keeps the vehicles off, off our lawn and, you know, just like keeping, keeping the kids out of the people's backyards on, on the whole back here, you know, it just, it goes to respect and.
They also are included in our enrollment, aren't they?
The homeschool assistance, yeah.
So basically, they're included in the enrollment for the money that being fed into the school system, is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Can I get a motion to table it till next meeting or till we hear something?
We don't really need to have any action on this. It's just a discussion. So I, I think we should wait until we find out what they find out, what, what they can tell us about the attorney and this landowner south of here.
I agree. You guys agree?
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to number 12, items for the October school board meeting.
Right at this time, I don't have anything on the top of my head for October. October is usually a pretty slow month when it comes to business, so we can see how this works out with the, with Gideon. And then also I'll follow up with the Zercher reimbursement.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion by Greg, second by Amy. adjourned meeting, meeting adjourned.